All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Uh, Council President McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. So I, we're gonna start off with the administrative reports.
Good evening. In honor of February being Black History Month, the following events will be taking place virtually or in person. On Tuesday, February 15th at 1:00 p.m., the City of Bellevue will be hosting cultural conversations, story in the cloth, quilting traditions and practices in the African-American community. On Thursday, February 17th at 5:00 p.m., the Northwest African-American Museum is hosting the Past, Present, and Future of Black History, moderated by Dr. Quintard Taylor of the University of Washington, with keynote speaker Lonnie G. Bunch III, Secretary of the Smithsonian Institution. On February 23rd, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., the African-Americans Reach and Teach Health (AARTH) will host African dance and rituals. And, February 26th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., the Renton African-American Community and the City of Renton will co-host a Black History Month celebration. More information will be available on this soon. Also happening soon, tomorrow, February 15th, as well as next week, February 22nd, from 12:30 to 2:00, the Emergency Feeding Program SOS will be hosting lunch pop-ups at 300 Rainier Avenue North. This free event is open to the unsheltered and residents with food insecurities. Amazon Fresh ready-to-eat food and drinks will be available, as well as personal hygiene kits, cleaning supplies, and socks. On Saturday, February 19th, from 10:00 to 11:00, the Remember and Resist Day of Remembrance will be held at the Puyallup Fairgrounds. At noon, the program will continue at the Northwest Detention Center in Tacoma. This date marks 80 years since the signing of Executive Order 9066 that authorized the forced removal and mass incarceration of all Japanese-Americans on the West Coast and beyond. Weather permitting, there will be some outdoor programming. Masks and social distancing is required. To RSVP or for more information, please email info@seattlejacl.org. And next, links to all of these websites and further information are in this report and linked as part of today's agenda packet. Also, Veterans Memorial Park offers a unique setting to reflect on the names of over 2,000 U.S. veterans etched into granite tile plaques. Each Memorial Day, the city honors military veterans with a ceremony at this park. February 28th is the deadline to submit applications for a memorial tile to be completed by this year's Memorial Day service. Application instructions can be found on our website or call the Parks and Recreation Department at 425-430-6600. Washington State Department of Commerce has awarded the City of Renton a grant of over $1.7 million from Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program, CHIP. The purpose of this funding is for water, sewer, and storm system infrastructure improvements that serve affordable housing projects in reimbursement of waived utility system development charges that affordable housing projects typically pay as part of the project's permit approval. The City of Renton Water Utility will make off-site water system infrastructure improvements at Renton Housing Authority's 76-unit Sunset Gardens Affordable Housing Project, which will start construction in the spring. Part of the funding will be used as reimbursement of system development charges that were waived on the Sunset Gardens project. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found on our website. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That concludes our administrative report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of. You've been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue, that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. And I know we have a few people signed up today.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven people signed up today.
Okay.
The first person is Ally Cohen. Ally, go ahead.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hey, so I'm Ally Cohen. I live and work in Renton. And I saw a slide, I think it was, from the Finance Committee for the ARPA budget. And I just wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to potentially watching police body cam from Wi-Fi provided to the downtown core. And I just wanted to really say thank you for considering that. I think that's a huge milestone to consider, the police body cams. I've made a lot of public comment that's things that I think we need and maybe potentially deficit-based. And so I really wanted to just ride this high of really saying thank you for seeing that need, believing in that need. And I know something like body cams can really open a can of worms. So I also see it as a really, like, a signifier also of seeing, like, these equity-type conversations being a dialogue and not just, like, checking a list and recognizing that this could open up a lot of further conversations. And I really appreciate that. I did, I, you know, of course, I gotta say a little something too. I did think it was a little weird that, like, 600,000 going to small businesses and 3 million potentially going to a city hall lobby. Like, I don't really know what that is. But I do trust that there are other folks with more expertise in that area and folks with expertise to see about that on council too. So I just wanted to express my gratitude tonight for all of that. Thank y'all. The end.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Winter Cashman. Winter, go ahead.
Hi, I just sort of echo what Ally was saying. Really appreciative of the body cam funding, but also concerned about COVID relief money being spent on renovating City Hall rather than going into our communities and uplifting the people who have been set back by the pandemic. I'll just leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next.
Before we start on the next, I just wanna point out, I wanna thank the two callers. The lobby improvements really are about access and creating better access to staff for residents. So thank you for calling in. Okay.
The next person is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I wanted to give a quick thank you to Councilmember O'Halloran for coming out to the Downtown Renton Chocolate Crawl and Coffee Crawl this weekend. We had over 300 guests participate in the same spread out over two days. And half of those participants were from cities outside of Renton, including Anacortes and Port Townsend and Olympia. So thank you very much, Councilmember O'Halloran, for your support there. Quickly, though, I wanna jump back onto the ARPA funds. So, signed into law on March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act provides $350 billion in additional funding for state and local governments. The state funding portion is approximately $195 billion, with $25.5 billion distributed equally among the 50 states and the District of Columbia, and the remaining amount distributed according to the formula based on unemployment. The local funding portion is approximately $130 billion, equally divided between cities and counties. Per city, $65 billion is divided between jurisdictions that are community development block grants, entitlement jurisdictions, and those that are not. $45.5 billion of the $65 billion will be allocated to metropolitan cities utilizing a modified CDVG formula and the remaining amount for jurisdictions that are non-entitlement according to population. Eligible uses of those funds include revenue replacement for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction due to COVID public health emergency. COVID-19 expenditures or negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including assistance to small businesses, households, and hard-hit industries and economic recovery, premium pay for essential workers, and investments in water, sewer, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Funding must be spent by the end of calendar year 2024, so another two years for that spending. While I have great respect for the magnificent task placed upon city staff of learning the programs and allocating the funding appropriate to the guidelines, I'm concerned with the figures as presented in the recent Finance Committee report. As we see other cities and jurisdictions finding funding for not just rent relief, as the City of Renton proposes, but rent and mortgage relief, which is critical for landlords in light of eviction moratoriums, we see just a small amount of funding allocated for the struggling business community in Renton. $600,000 was quickly approved to readily get out of the, into the hands of the downtown businesses, which I have repeatedly come to the council with concerns about the approach and implementation. The construction impacts and COVID-related delays to construction have been devastating to the downtown business community. The restrictions that were placed upon the grant funding, however, was greater than that imposed by the ARPA program itself. Of the $600,000, additional restrictions were imposed in which businesses not paying retail sales tax were not eligible to apply for said grant funds. This means any business which is a service industry and does not have retail sales received no support from these funds. While it is appreciated that the retail shops were able to apply for the funds, there are additional businesses which rely solely upon a customer base coming into their stores that continue to struggle without support. Shops like CK Nails, Details Barber Shop, Linda's Barber Shop, Chiropractors Acupuncturist, no support because of no sales tax paid. Again, not an ARPA restriction, an additional City of Renton imposed restriction. Further, the geographical boundaries for the businesses able to apply was limited to not the downtown core, but a smaller subset of the downtown core. This precluded businesses in the surrounding perimeter from applying for grant support, yet they were impacted by the construction. Due date, less than half of those funds allocated for downtown support has been distributed. And we now hear the pool of 600,000 may be all that is earmarked for business support. With respect, the support for those downtown businesses due to the construction and COVID-related delays was appreciated. But as the council now considers funding $10 million toward other city support, including what is reported as a $3 million City Hall renovation, to please consider what the intent of these American Rescue Plan funds were designed for. Please consider opening the grant funding for the downtown businesses to all businesses downtown and not just those paying retail sales tax. Please consider opening the grant funding for downtown businesses as outlined by the downtown core maps and the entirety of the construction-related activity and not just the centered subset. Please, as the pandemic has continued and businesses throughout the entire Renton community are struggling, please, 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 consider earmarking additional funding for those business grants throughout the entire Renton community. These businesses are struggling, and we're seeing doors closed still. With the greatest of respect for the position that you find yourselves in, thank you very much for hearing me tonight.
The next person we have is Rachel Wakaitanua. Rachel, go ahead.
My name is Rachel Wongaitanua, and I am a resident of Renton, Washington. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Rachel Wongaitanua, and I am both, I am of both Polynesian and Melanesian descent. My parents come from the islands of Fiji. I am a resident of Renton and currently attend Renton High School as a junior. I am both a youth council member and client of the Pacifica Wayfinders, a youth-led program at the Pacific Islander Community Association of Washington, located in Federal Way. I am here today to shed light on the restorative justice practices that you have willingly demonized by following the lead of Mayor Jim Farrell, without reaching out to any of the restorative justice programs that service our youths. By signing off and following Mayor Farrell's lead, you have shown us that you lack both the empathy to serve at-risk youth and knowledge of the effectiveness that restorative justice programs have had on youth across South King County. One restorative justice program that I would like to talk about today is the Pacifica Wayfinders. I have been a client in this program since last spring and have had many opportunities to better understand and identify myself as an individual and as a leader. I've been exposed to a cultural environment that welcomes me every day and works with me on a consistent basis, unlike the programs offered by schools that we are expected to reach out to for help. As a, as a participant here, I have received mental support with mental support, help with transportation, assistance with school, and a very supportive and motivating crowd, along with a few friends who I would consider family. This program holds daily events for us Pacifica youth, like our youth council meetings that happen every first and third Tuesday of the month, where we all meet and learn about each other's islands, set goals, set routines, and discuss issues going on within our communities, along with discussing things that we can do better, not only for our communities, but for each other as well. They also hold a study hall here every Friday at the office, where we are offered a calm, quiet space for us to focus into our schoolwork, along with assistance if needed by the Wayfinders. The Pacifica Wayfinder program has impacted my life in a very positive way. I'm constantly being motivated by the Wayfinders to keep going, even when things get stressful. And I've received daily check-ins from the Wayfinders, where they ask about my mental health and overall well-being. Being offered services such as these has put me at a way better point in my life than before I was even a part of the program. So Mayor Armando Pavone, please keep an open mind to continuing the funding towards the Restorative Community Pathways program before completely giving up and failing our at-risk youth by locking them up in cages. We are not perfect, nor will we ever be, but sometimes all we need is another opportunity. Thank you for your time.
The next person we have is Kalani Tabakia. Kalani, go ahead.
Hello. Well, we're not going, Mayor Armando Pavone, city council members, and everyone else. My name is Kalani Rasindam Javandia. I am 18 years old. My pronouns are she/her/hers. I'm also a recent graduate from Hazen High School. And I am a Fiji youth organizer at the Pacific Islander Community Association. Where I work, we help uplift our Pacifica community by getting them the help that they need and providing them, providing the youth with things that can help them succeed. I am on this soon to give my comment on the decision that you released with other South King County to stop the funding for restorative community pathways. Our Pacifica Wayfinder program is an RCP program. I find the decision you all made to be one-sided, progressive, and closed-minded. I believe that it shouldn't be paused because, to me, I find it inhumane for youth to be locked up in a cage. We are all human. We're not perfect. Everyone makes mistakes. But that does not mean they need to be locked in a cage for however many years without getting any support from anyone. Also, restorative justice practices have been proven to help people who have fended crimes and helps people who have been affected to heal. So questions I have for you all are, if something works, why would you want to not support it or fund it? What if your kids were in that position? What would you want to happen? And as the mayor and city council, it's your job to take care of the people in your city. Why are you not doing that? To me, it feels as if you are putting these kids in the system just because you don't know how or want to deal with them. Going these kids into these prisons does nothing to help them. There are no rehabilitation practices in these prisons. But when they come to Pika, they have a lot more opportunities to get better, learn new things, and thrive in a no-judgment environment. This space we have created welcomes youth with open arms and an open heart. We do different things to help the kids who come through us. We have youth council meetings where we discuss different topics that are going on in our community, as well as learning more about our different Pacific Islander cultures. This gives us a better understanding of each other so we can see why we are the way that we are. Also, on Fridays, we hold a study hall where we can help our youth with their schoolwork so they can strive in school, along with a lot of other programs. To finish, I just wanna reiterate what I just talked about. Restorative community pathways is a program that I believe should be funded and supported. If you don't support it, then you're failing this community. When the crime rate goes up, it isn't because of these youth that you are, that you find to be a danger to society. It's because you're all afraid of change and progress. It wouldn't be their fault. It would be yours. Thank you. We're not gonna back away.
The next person we have is Donna Tabakia. Donna, go ahead.
Do I turn on my camera? Sorry. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Donna Ramona Talangiya, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. I reside here in Renton, and I'm a student at Hazen High School. I'm a Pacific Islander youth, and I'm a part of a Pacifica Youth Council run by the Pacific Islander Community Association, located in Federal Way. The youth council is a safe space for SPI youths here in, here in Washington to gather and start conversations about topics and also learn about and take advantage of resources open to us. I am here to bring awareness and speak out against, against the South King County mayor's move to put a pause on Restorative Community Pathways, or RCP. RCP is a program designed by many different communities that prioritizes healing over punishment for youths in the system here in King County. I think that by taking away this program, you are setting hundreds of youths up for failure in the near and far future. If you think throwing kids in cages without any support or resources will make them want to change their lives around, then you're sadly mistaken. By replacing restorative justice with punishment, you are pushing the idea that these kids have nothing to heal from, that they are just bad people who deserve to be punished. But you cannot sit there and demonize these kids without any regard to their backgrounds. I strongly believe that the lasting effects of the juvenile system on the young and powerful minds of youths is damaging and almost irreparable. I use the word "almost" here because saying that damage is irreparable would mean there's no way to help heal and change these kids. There is. And that is through the restorative justice practices and principles placed within programs like the Pacifica Wayfinders and RCP. RCP is a second chance at life. It's a fair chance for those who are born into or fell into unfair circumstances. At the end of the day, mayor and city council members, these people who you so heavily degrade are just kids. Kids who are learning to navigate through life, kids who make mistakes. These kids have a real chance to turn their lives around and not let these mistakes define them. But it's in your hands now. Mayor, I urge you and your colleagues to rethink your decisions and opinions on this program. Thank you for your time.
The last person we have is Amaya Vili. Amaya, go ahead. Amaya, are you there?
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amaya Vili, and I reside in Renton, Washington. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a member of the Pacific Islander Community and Pika Well Youth Council. I'm here today to shed light and advocate for why restorative community pathways should be supported and the consequences not supporting it would have on our communities. We define restorative community pathways as a process that creates more resources for youth and members of the community so they can engage in restorative justice and healing rather than harmful court system that is proof to only increase youth chances of reoffending in their adult years, only furthering and continuing the cycle of harm and silence. Restorative Community Pathways was designed by youth from South King, parents, community orgs, and survivors of violence. Restorative Community Pathway steers away from punishment and pushes for youth and community support through a particular healing process suited for each youth that is led and guided by the participants of RCP and in-coordinated efforts with those who support them, such as their families, mentors, and friends. So my question is, why is it with all of these resources and all of the support and individuals willing to invest into this program that we still have youth falling victim to the system because of internalized financial, family, and mental health adversities? In all actuality, we do not lack resources. We lack transition. And in the transformation of silence into action, it is significant to establish the function of RCP in this transformation and recognize the role of RCP as a vital one, decide to build and maintain our communities together, and recognize and solve our major concerns and problems together. So I, a Samoan woman alongside my Fiji colleagues and many more here watching, doing our part in our work, come to ask you, are you doing yours? And if you aren't, I strongly advise you to actively support RCP rather than the mayor of Renton's call to pause it. Thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That was our last speaker. Okay. So, speaking to the last few speakers, I wanna point out a couple of things. The mayors asked for the pause because this was a program that was implemented without any discussion. We didn't have any idea what it was. And since then, we have had contact and communication with King County. We're learning more about it by the day. We've never asked for the funding to be stopped. And we've never said that we're not supportive of restorative justice practices. Actually, conversely, so. Unfortunately, the speakers today are a little behind on where we're at on this. So I think we're moving forward with it. Okay, with that, next up is the consent agenda. We've got five items for council consideration. Are there any items that council would like removed for separate consideration?
Seeing that, Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has some committee reports.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee report. The first is regarding the Urban Forest Management Plan. The Planning and Development Committee directed staff to return to the committee with the recommended course of action after completion of the public planning process for the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Staff has completed the process. The Planning and Development Committee concurs in the staff and planning commission's recommendation to adopt the plan. The committee further recommends that a resolution adopting the plan be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding Docket 16 Group D. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the 2021 Title IV Docket Group 16, Group D. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. That's Docket 197 Trees and Docket 205 Administrative Code Interpretation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
Okay, the final Planning and Development Committee report is also a docket item. It's Docket 206. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation and planning commission recommendation to adopt the 2021 Title IV Docket Group 16, Group D, Item D 206, Expansion of the Multifamily Property Tax Exemption Residential Targeted Areas. Item D 206 designates the Rainier Grady Junction TOD Subarea Residential Targeted Area, allowing eligible projects to apply for an eight, 12, or 20-year exemption. Item D 206 also designates the South Lake Washington Residential Targeted Area, allowing eligible, affordable projects in that area to apply for a 12- or 20-year exemption. The committee further recommends that an ordinance regarding this item be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. On, we are on to Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has eight committee reports.
Hey, the first report is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Counts payable, total payment of $6,972,219.50 for a number of vouchers and payroll vouchers and two wire transfers. Two payroll, a total payment of $1,559,570.40 for payroll vouchers, including 595 direct deposits and eight checks. This is the January 1st through 15th pay period. And then Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $22,161.35.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Hey, the next report is
Motion carries.
Oh, sorry. The next report is Sunset Gardens Grant Agreement with the Renton Housing Authority. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant agreement with the Renton Housing Authority for $1.5 million for Sunset Gardens, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Hey, the next
Motion carries.
Sorry, I did it again. The next report is regarding Amendment 3 to the SNAP Agreement with the Washington State Department of Health. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment 3 to the 2020 Washington State Department of Health Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP Incentive Agreement, to accept an additional $27,500 in funding at the Renton Farmers Market for January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay. Next is regarding a conservation fee payment for the Kulan North Water Walk Regulatory Approval. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to approve the payment of the required Restoration and Permitting, RAP, Conservation Fee in the amount of $154,176.91. The full cost of the RAP Conservation Fee has been budgeted in the proper account.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding tenant improvements at Seventh Floor of City Hall. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the agreement with Mackenzie Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $187,572 for tenant improvements for the City Hall Seventh Floor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a singular wireless lease at the Highlands Reservoir. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the new lease agreement with new singular wireless PC at the Highlands Reservoir for 20 years, effective February 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2042, with a one-time administration fee of $7,500 and a monthly fee of $2,800 with 3% annual increases.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
We always love opportunities for passive revenue. So with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a Rainier-Brady Junction Transit Oriented Development Planned Action EIS Grant and Contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize execution of a grant agreement with the Department of Commerce for $250,000 in grant funds, subject to approval as informed by the City Attorney Department, to be used for the Rainier-Grady Junction TOD Subarea Planned Action EIS. EIS is the Environmental Impact Statement. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to enter into an agreement with Burke Consulting Incorporated in the amount of $240,000 to assist in the development of the Rainier-Grady Junction Planned Action EIS.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, for the last report, I actually have a majority report and a minority report. Council Policy 805 requires I read both before
Okay.
before the vote is taken. I'll read the majority vote, the majority report first. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the targeted allocation of remaining American Rescue Plan ARPA spending in the amount of $11,650,000 to be used for the outlined purposes, with an unallocated amount of $2,383,855 to be held for future consideration. Future spending will be reviewed and verified by the Finance Department to ensure compliance with the spending plan adopted by council. The Finance, the minority report reads, "The Finance Committee member Kim Convan recommends the ARPA recommendation be modified to reflect the needs of the community as follows. City operations, lobby renovations, and public sector revenue loss of the proposed $10 million should be decreased to $7 million, an increase in small business grants for an additional $1 million, and unallocated funds to be allocated to the Equity and Human Services Department," I believe, "of $4,383,855."
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
I need to know which report you're referring to.
The Finance Committee Committee Report, the majority report.
Majority report, okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? Uh, Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we all heard my report, Jeff, Jason has read the minority report, and I have concern about the ARPA recommendation hereby staff. As we look into the ARPA funds, 10, more than 50%, we're looking at 11 million of the funds going to city and city operation overall. And we're looking at the only opportunity for small businesses is just a $600 grant, $600,000 grant. And as we look at the equity and human services and the funding that is greatly in need for our community right now when it comes to rental assistance and mental health services and all the things that have been, we've been left out, not just this last two years, but for the last eight, nine years, we're playing catch-up. And ARPA funds is meant, yes, for city support, municipality, but also really the rescue part of it. And our community right now is currently in need of rescuing with the necessary human services and equity programs that we had, which is according to our landmark business plan. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address some of the comments of the public regarding the ARPA funds, specifically about the lobby improvements. Thank you very much for bringing this concern because, yes, if I read the document and just say lobby improvements, it doesn't say really what it is and what we face in 2020. At the beginning of the 2020, when we had to face the pandemic, over the years, we have heard people that, English is their second language, how hard it was for them to navigate the City Hall to know where the services are provided. Of course, we didn't realize how true that was until 2020, that we had to close City Hall. And then when we tried to reopen it, people had to navigate to seven floors to be able to be provided by several services. So that was a kind of wake-up call to say, we have always said that we are welcoming city, and not even our facilities were welcoming facilities. So the lobby improvement is not a lobby improvement. It's bringing all the services that we provide to our clients, to our customers, to our residents, to the level one, is it level one floor? The lobby floor?
Yeah.
No, it's lobby floor, actually. It's called lobby floor. So all the licenses, all the pays, public utilities, all the services, except the court services, all the city clerk services, all the services are gonna be on the lobby floor. The other part that is very important to remind is that we have tried very hard to do all this, offer all these services online. But unfortunately, a lot of people feel more comfortable going for City Hall for different reasons. The other part of this money is not just for the lobby remodelation, it's for the new office of the Equity Health and Health Services that is gonna be also on the lobby floor. For that office, we need a different entrance to provide safety to people that want to reserve in anonymous when they go to City Hall. So the whole department is gonna be in that area as well. So that's the reason why we allocated money for the lobby. I'm not trying to say that it's more important, that money, than the rest of the money. Of course, we need money for absolutely everything. And I realize that our community, as well as our, as our business, also are in need. But I just wanted to clarify that this is not just because we want the lobby to look cute. This is actually a service to provide more efficient services and to really help people navigate City Hall. And in case, of course, the pandemic doesn't continue, we don't have to expose our community to navigate all, every single floor and being in a elevator to provide safety for them. That is the only note that I wanted to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like next up is Councilmember McGurbin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greatly appreciate Councilmember Perez's explanation of the lobby. In fact, I think, even though I was a little bit versed in the plan, I feel like even that explanation clarified it for me even a little bit. So I do feel a lot more comfortable with that going forward as part of this. I do think that that is something we need to obviously communicate to the community if we choose to adopt this today and include this portion in it. Because I think I can certainly see how, upon looking at it, you could say, hey, look, they're just, you know, renovating their space to make it better, when it really, as you said, even during public comment, yeah, was the intent is to make it more customer service oriented. If there was, if, I would propose, though, if there was enough concern about that, that that maybe would be something we could pull back and consider. But at the end of the day, like, I think this, this plan makes sense. I think also the needs identified around funding human services is also well-taken, too. And I know we're doing that, the human services need assessment. And if that comes in and shows that we might need more, that would be my only concern, that we refill that pot, whether it's with ARPA money, or we find the money somewhere else. And I know that comes down to budget time. So I guess what I'm saying, long answer, short, is I'm okay with, I think, moving this recommendation. I really love that we're funding body cameras, we heard from speakers. The digital equity component for Wi-Fi is great. All in all, I think this is a good plan. It's not a perfect plan. There are gaps, and we do need to address those. So if we do move this forward today, I do look forward to the conversation continuing. If there is enough concern that folks want to retool this, I'm okay with, I wouldn't oppose the idea of talking about this more in town if we felt like we need to talk through some of this at a later date if there were enough councilmembers who felt that way. But otherwise, I say, you know, these are all needs, and they have justification behind them. The last thing I want to touch on, sorry, to go on a little bit, the revenue loss. Bottom end of the day, like, we gotta, we gotta have a budget. And if we don't cover our losses, too, I mean, that comes out in taxes and other things that we would have to do to address that shortfall. That's less money we can spend and reinvest back in the community. So if there are opportunities to address some of these gaps in the budget later, I would look forward to that as an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the explanation for the lobby because also when I was looking at the whole matrix, I'm concerned about what, how much money is going into which buckets. And if I'm asked to vote on this, I would actually, I don't know if I'm comfortable with how much money is going towards city operations in comparison back to our communities that actually need them. Historically, we've underfunded human services, and I don't trust this council to prioritize human services by continually pushing it down the line. And that doesn't make sense to me. This, the way we've allocated these ARPA funds, especially during a budget year, we have a biannual budget coming up at the end of the year. I think the lobby and other things that are in this particular bucket or around these buckets could be reallocated or re, like, look at different pots of money. But I don't know if ARPA is where we should be allocating more than half, as mentioned by Councilmember Van, to city operations rather than waiting for the biannual budget. It doesn't seem financially sound or fair or equitable, especially when the businesses have been struggling and our community has been struggling. And I want to ask this council, how many of you have relied on the city and human services to survive? How many of you have been in need of human services or community-based services? And I think that might be telling to where our biases lie in regards to funding a $3 million lobby in comparison to the businesses that desperately need these funds.
Councilmember Van. No.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add in terms of, when you talk about the lobby equity, making sure it's equitable. Folks who speak different languages, I speak multiple languages, and being an ESL student myself, and understanding what it means to navigate a system and navigating multiple floors, I understand. We definitely need the efficiency and inclusivity of our City Hall. But is the funding from ARPA the right tool for that? And of course, as you see through my minority report, it's asking for a decrease in the overall $10 million proposal to being $7 million. So not objecting to it, but I think that with our funding that we have, it's rarely do we have a stabilized, small business stabilization fund. I mean, that was actually voted down, and we don't have the structure to create that on our own revenue. And when our businesses are closing their doors, that, to me, is telling of what we need to do to help our businesses revive.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of, couple of questions. One, do we know if there are any other funds that are going to come this way in the near future? That's question number one. Question number two, is there a broader explanation of what we've done with the funds that we received as far as care funds and other funds that we've used? And where those funds went to? Just so that we can get a grounding in what we're doing with these ARPA funds versus the other funds that we receive during the handover?
Um, yes, and I'm gonna ask for staff to be promoted to help with this. I think I see her. Carrie. There we go. I can't speak to Cares. Well, she's got the exact dollar figures. Oh, wait. Did you hear those questions?
Yes. So for care spending that we, first, we don't have any information that we're gonna be getting any additional funding from Treasury in regards to coronavirus from Treasury in regards to coronavirus relief. So that's the first question. Last year with CAREs, we allocated 1.4 billion of the CAREs for human services, but we weren't able to spend all of that. Only 644 was able to be out because there was such a short timeframe. We had 1.6 million of our CAREs funding that went out to small businesses.
I'm sorry, Carrie, can you repeat that number? What was it, going up to small businesses?
1.6 million went for small business grants. And then we have additional, almost 600,000 that we're getting through CDVG for coronavirus that we have not spent yet that can be used for human services.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me to ask one more question, please.
Yes, absolutely. And Carrie, can you, and I don't remember the dollar amount, can you remind me what the dollar amount is for the body cams that we're looking at?
It's almost $3 million over a five-year period.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and that doesn't include any additional staff time. That's just the purchase of the body cameras and the software to run.
And that doesn't include any training or anything that we have to do?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not sure, though.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any more hands. What's the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have a question.
Okay. Once again, this is to, Jason, I'll have to go back to the special title. What's the title again, Jason?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the Finance Committee Committee Report for the American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan. The majority, the majority report is what she moved to be approved.
Okay. So on the floor, we have the majority for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay.
Nay.
And the ayes have it. All right, next up is legislation. We have one resolution and two ordinances.
Okay, the resolution is regarding the Urban Forest Management Plan that we spoke about earlier. It's simple, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton Urban Forest Management Plan 2022 through 2032.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right. Next up, we have an ordinance for first reading and advancement to second and final reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2022 City of Renton Salary Table for nonrepresented city employees. Ask me local 21 city employees, Renton Police Department commissioned officers, and Renton Police Department noncommissioned employees.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, for second and final reading, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2022 City of Renton Salary Table for nonrepresented city employees. Ask me local 21 city employees, Renton Police Department commissioned officers, and Renton Police Department noncommissioned employees.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Von.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding, it's for first reading only, it's regarding the multifamily tax exemption extension. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4122B and 4122D of the Renton Municipal Code by extending the Rainier-Brady Junction TOD subarea and South Lake, Washington, subarea, the multifamily housing property tax exemption, adopting the eligible areas for multifamily housing incentives map, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
Yes, at this time, I would like to move that the agenda be amended to add a ordinance for first reading advancement to second reading concerning moratorium on new warehouse and distribution facilities.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Perez, to change the agenda to add, I don't have the language to add a more.
To add a, an ordinance.
Try Newland.
Yeah, an ordinance regarding warehouse and distribution center moratorium.
Okay, you guys got that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right. Motion carries.
Okay. This is for first reading and advancement for second and final reading at tonight's meeting. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring a moratorium on land use, building permit and business license application for warehousing and distribution, setting forth findings of fact in support of said moratorium, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Perez. I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be put on second and final reading tonight. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Oppose nay. All right, motion carries.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring a moratorium on land use, building permit and business license applications for warehousing and distribution, setting forth findings of fact in support of said moratorium, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Perez. I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Von.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next up is new business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment, I'm getting my screen brought up. Was slow on the draw. All right, so, just need to announce our next council meeting, which is, I'm trying to figure, I think, I think what I'm trying to announce is that on Monday is the President's Day holiday, and there will be no meetings. I was looking below, it says we have a meeting on Tuesday. Is that correct? A council meeting on Tuesday?
Sorry, that's a typo. February 28th is your next meeting. It's a Monday.
Oh, I, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. I should have looked at that. So February 28th, which is a Monday, at 6:00 PM, committee of the whole will be meeting. There's one item on the agenda, Community Services, Parks, and Recreation Year Review. And then followed by that, at 7:00 PM, is our council meeting via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, February 28th, planned development committee will be at 5:00 PM via video conference. We have three items on the agenda, retail pet sales, 2022 work program, and emerging issues in CEB. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, February 15, 2022, Tuesday, we have Transportation Committee at 5:00 PM via video conference. And the topics on the agendas are, one, Addendum Number 7-22 to like 13005 with the Landing Gearworks, two, emerging issues in transportation, Wells Avenue South and Williams Avenue South Conversion Project Update, CIP Project Status and Work Plan, and Airport Layout Plan. And that's it for new business. And I also want, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank, I know that our community members might not be on Zoom right now, but I want to thank Donna, Kelly, Rachel, and Amaya for speaking their truth and to voice their concerns, and very much appreciated.
Okay, Councilmember Alberston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce the Utilities Committee will be meeting tomorrow, February 15th, via video conference on the agenda as emerging issues in utilities and specifically solid waste billing credit update, downtown utility improvement project construction update, and national pollution discharge elimination systems permit program. That's all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember.
3:30.
Gotcha. Councilmember Rivera.
No, no new business, Mr. Mayor, but I would also like to take a moment and thank our public commenters that spoke regarding the Pacifica Wavefinders Program, which I think is an incredible program, and say that I am with you and hear you and in full support of RCP and appreciate you coming tonight to express your concerns. They're valid and necessary. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that on Monday, February 28th, at 4:00 PM via video conference, the Finance Committee will be meeting. We have three items on the agenda. And forgive me, the first one is pretty long. Fuel tax grant agreement with the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvement Project Phase Four. The second item is vouchers, and the third item is emerging issues in finance. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Council President McGurven, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wants to stay around, say no. All right. Have a good night, everybody. Move adjourn.